Seeing that it is six o'clock, we'll get started. This is the April 6th, 2022 Correville Planning and Zoning Meeting, and it is now called to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Fessler.
Here.
Holderness.
Here.
Kasserly.
Here.
Aaron's.
Here.
Wenman.
Here.
Friedhoff.
Here.
Taylor.
Here. Okay. Do we have any corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Fessler. Seconded by Kasserly. We will now vote on approving the agenda. All those who approve say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, seven to zero. Are there any corrections to the notes from our last meeting? This would be the March 2nd, 2022 meeting minutes. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 2nd, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Kasserly, seconded by Aaron's. We will now vote on approving the minutes from the March 2nd, 2022 meeting. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven to zero. All right, we are now moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. We have a public hearing requested by Correville West LLC to recommend approval of final plat for Coral Six Square, Part One. I will now open the public hearing on this item. Seeing no one moving forward, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of the final plat?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Aaron's, seconded by Holderness. Any discussion on this one?
I would just note that this plat will record the right-of-way alignment for future Coral Six Square Drive, which is Lot A on the plat. The drive will provide needed secondary access for the expansion of Western Hills Mobile Home Park, and the plat also describes two outlots, to the east and west. Those are identified for future development, and city staff has reviewed the plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation filing outlined in City Code. That's all I have.
Dave, does that new street only give access to the two outlots? It doesn't actually access the existing trailer court, does it?
This will actually go up to the boundary of the trailer park, so yes, it will. It will connect to the trailer park, and I would imagine east-west streets coming off of Coral Six or coming off this drive once outlots A and B develop.
Is that intended to be the future expansion, those outlots?
No, I'm sorry, the future expansion is actually in the northwest part of the Western Hills Mobile Home Park. The reason that this is needed is once you exceed a certain number of housing units, you need two ways in and out of a subdivision. So during their last expansion, we realized that throughout previous years, we've exceeded that number, and it required this drive be installed.
So since, you know, we know public improvements, a preliminary plat was not required, but they're aware that, as Ron mentioned, that when that has to connect to the existing drive, they're going to move some trailers, because there is no drive.
Yes, I think that they're going to plan on losing at least one trailer.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we will now vote on the approval of the final plat. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yeah. Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaron's?
Aye.
Wenman?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Motion carried, seven to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. We have a public hearing requested by Iowa Corridor Company to recommend rezoning from the Commercial Planned Unit Development One District, CPUD-1, to the Commercial Planned Unit Development Two District, CPUD-2, and approve a PUDB site plan for Lot One Redhawk Subdivision, Part Three. I will now open the public hearing on this item.
Good evening, John Morton with MMS Consultants representing the applicant. It's an application, as presented on the screen there, for a Dunkin' drive-through restaurant. We worked with staff to try to accommodate some additional, to make sure that we were doing a good job of providing screening along Coral Ridge Avenue, and then also along the trail that accesses, stretches from Coral Ridge Avenue back to the Redhawk Development to do a little bit of extra landscaping on the south side of the property there. Provided, it has two drive-through lanes, it has two pickup windows, there's some spots for mobile order parking as well, and then we provided stormwater quality with the center portion of the property, and then in the northwest corner and the west portion of the property. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
So I noticed that we're looking at having reduced parking spaces potentially in the parking lot?
Correct. That's something that staff worked with MMS on and staff is agreeable to in this particular application. I know I've mentioned before that PUDs are intended to allow certain degrees of flexibility, restrict adherence to some design standards. Parking can, of course, be one of those, but in return, the city expects elevated site or building design with a particular project. In this case, we were able to get, we removed some of the parallel stalls on the south border of this property that staff and, I believe, MMS also concurred that weren't really going to be heavily used, since they would also be adjacent to the drive aisles, and we greatly enhanced a lot of the landscaping and screening on there, so that was the trade-off in that.
I was just curious, do you know how many seating, how much seating will be there?
This is ample for, it's actually above what they typically require, see on a day-to-day basis at most of their other similar locations for seating, for parking capacity based on the employees and the typical seating count. There aren't very many, as Dave has there, there's not a lot of seating. Most of it is walk-up traffic and drive-through traffic.
That was another consideration we made in the decision, is this is the floor plan for the proposed Dunkin', and you can see that there's a lot of sink space, prep space, restroom space dedicated to this, but there's not a lot of floor space in terms of dining with this, which is fairly typical of Dunkin' Donuts sites.
Okay, thank you.
As long as they have a lot of drive-through space.
Dave, do you have a view that shows where this building would be, like in relation to where Starbucks is, so I can help orient myself?
Sure.
And if you'd like, while you're doing that, I can close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to consider recommending rezoning to the CPUD-2 district?
So moved.
Moved by Wenman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Aaron's. And we can lead into discussion.
So, Ron, 3290 here, this is the Starbucks site. This is where the Heartland Dental Building will be located, you've probably seen some temporary signage for that, and this is where the Dunkin' Donuts is located at 3240.
Thank you.
To the west of that is the large multifamily Redhawk or 965 Flats development that's been going on.
Dave, could you give me just a quick rundown of the difference between these two zonings, the CPDU-1 and the CBDU-2?
Right.
What the value is that they're getting from the transition?
So, really, a CPUD-1 or any sort of a PUD-1 zoning district is intended to be applied for, for large-scale developments or master plans that are intended to occur over a long period of time. Once a specific, more specific plans are identified in terms of building details and landscaping and site design, that's when we would move from the master planning stage to an actual development-ready plan that can be approved, so it's just much more detailed.
Got it.
Any other questions? We will now vote on the approval of rezoning to the CPUD-2 district. Could I have a roll call?
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaron's?
Aye.
Wenman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Motion carried, seven to zero. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Holderness.
Seconded.
Seconded by Friedhoff. Any more discussion on this one?
I believe the commission has been forwarded copies of the elevations. If not, I can just pull those up quick. Just to give you an idea, the actual material samples are on the table in front of you. There will be predominantly masonry materials as well as niché panel. These materials are not foreign to the development that we're seeing in the West land use area. All the materials proposed on this project align with the design and site requirements in the West land use area master plan.
All right. We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Roll call, please.
Aaron's?
Aye.
Wenman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Motion carried, seven to zero. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. We have a public hearing requested by 13th Street Lots LLC to recommend approval to amend the Correville Community Plan Land Use Map from Open Space to Low Density Residential. I will now open the public hearing on this item. And I will ask, as people move forward to the podium, to please state your name and your address.
My name's Bruce Sobek. I live at 2032 13th Street. What I'm here for is to find out a little bit more about what is the purpose of this development and how they're going to gain access. This appears to be a landlocked piece of property. How are they going to gain access to it? There's no information here that indicates any of that. So I'm looking for that information. Where do I have to go to get it? Do I have to go to the people that are?
No, actually, you're at the right place. That's the purpose of this hearing, and those are all things that we will discuss and help answer for you. So you're exactly the right place.
Okay, so can we, will you discuss that, and then I have an opportunity to respond?
We sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am Deborah Gregory Mitchener, and I own that property up there, so a little bit of history on it is that it was, it's zoned residential, R2, I believe, but for whatever reason, the land use map shows it as open space, which I believe to be a mistake. That was a mistake that was made when they, when they did that land use map in, what, So the residential zoning and the land use map are contradictory, because as an owner of that property, I can't do anything with it, it's open space. I guess if Correville wants to buy it and make it open space, that's up to them, but I can't do anything with it. So that was what David told us, is that it was a mistake made, and it needs to be changed. And as far as his question, as far as access, the whole property is, there's two lots on 13th Street, and there's an easement between those two lots that gives access to that three acres back behind, between that and the interstate. There is question as to whether we can use that easement, that's between me and Mid-American, because there is a huge gas line easement that goes through that property. But that's to be discussed later, from what I understand, but the property as a whole, I do own the properties that do access that land, so if you have any other questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
And Chairperson Taylor, I'd also be happy to offer my staff report, if that would help provide some background and context for the neighbors who are here this evening.
Okay.
Bear with me, there's quite a bit, but there's a lot of information and history to this, so I'll go through all of it. But what the applicant is asking is not to rezone the property, the applicant is requesting to amend the land use map for the property. So a community plan is the foundation for a city's decision-making. This board oftentimes references the land use plan map, as well as the community plan in decision-making for rezoning requests. It represents a city's vision for the future, describes how a community will look and function, and the Correville Community Plan is the result of a multifaceted, comprehensive process that included data collection, public input, as well as help from professional consultants. And the plan identifies existing conditions with the city, which includes land use, development, zoning, transportation, economy, the environment, and more. Again, it's a very comprehensive document. So this data, in combination with input with Correville residents and businesses, identifies issues and opportunities in our community, which forms the basis for the plan's goals and recommendations. So a land use map is part of a community's comprehensive plan, and that's really what we're discussing this evening, is the land use map part of a land use plan. This is the illustration of the community's vision for the future. It reflects existing and desired conditions and provides guidance on densities, character, and locations of land uses in the community. The land use map classifications are not the same as zoning classifications. Zoning defines in much greater specificity allowed uses and how a property can develop. So for example, the Correville Low Density Residential Land Use Classification allows for residential development that is zero to six dwelling units per acre. The land use map has established a general allowed use and density for that property. If that property were zoned R2, two-family residential district, the zoning district would further specify, excuse me, would further specify that that would need to be duplexes, and also specify specific bulk regulations or setbacks, how far a building needs to be from a side property line, a rear property line, a front property line. So there is a difference between a land use plan and map and zoning. Tonight, the only thing being considered is a change in the land use map. So prior to adoption of the 2014 Correville Community Plan, the property was designated as low-density residential. This was the case since the 1992 land use map. So during the 2014 community planning process, the property was designated open space. Open space is undeveloped areas typically associated with a public use or enjoyment. These can be small, isolated areas, or these can also be large, continuous areas. So in working with Ms. Mitchner, we did research, and we could not identify any specific input or analysis which resulted in this change. The applicant, as she stated, believes that this was done in error. That change could also be the result of a large Mid-American energy pipeline easement that goes through the property. This property is approximately 3.6 acres. The pipeline easement in which development cannot happen is actually 1.5 acres, so it is a fairly sizable chunk. That being said, it doesn't necessarily mean render a property as being undevelopable. The applicant has recently provided some concepts to the city that she believes can illustrate that 13th Street, or that this can be developed, and access would come off 13th Street. The applicant does own 2000, these are the properties under consideration tonight, and the property does, or the property owner also owns 2001 and 1919 13th Street, in which access would be, where the access would come from, and also where utilities would be connected from. So there's far too many unknown variables for us to make a determination today exactly how and how this property could or would be developed. However, that question is really inconsequential to the request before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission's task is to determine whether low-density residential is appropriate at this location. Will low-density residential development negatively impact the character of the area or neighboring streets? So we looked at the general character of the area, and all property in the immediate vicinity is currently classified as low-density residential and medium-density residential on the current 2014 Community Plan map. Low-density residential is defined as primarily single-family detached homes on subdivided lots that have a density between zero and six dwelling units per acre. Low-density residential can also include townhomes or duplexes. Development in the area consists of single-family detached as well as zero-lot attached homes. You can see that both east and west of this property. Medium-density residential allows for horizontally stacked townhomes, but not vertically stacked like apartment buildings. And medium-density is typically six to 16 dwelling units per acre. So for context, the subject immediately west of the property, which is Heritage Estates Part Four, is, this is this area here, is 23.61 acres and designated as medium-density residential. That contains approximately 120 units. The average density is approximately five dwelling units per acre, where that would also qualify as a low-density residential land use. The subdivision immediately south of the subject property, which is AMK Edition Two, is 23.76 acres and designated low-density residential. It has a total of 91 units, and the average density is a little under four dwelling units per acre for that area. So the applicant is requesting the commission review and recommend, or I'm sorry, recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission, or ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend changing the land use plan map back to low-density residential from open space. And that pipeline easement, I'm not sure if you can generally see, but that pipeline easement generally follows this area here.
Can you put an aerial map on there?
And I can, again, this isn't going to be perfect, it'll just give everybody in the room a general idea on where that easement happens to be located.
Dave, it might also be helpful, if you could explain to the neighbors what any future steps would have to occur before any building could take place there.
Sure, so the pipeline easement is largely in this area here. It also comes across parts of 2000, I'm sorry, it comes across parts of 2001, as well as a portion of 1919 13th Street. However, what makes this property potentially developable is the fact that a drive could be located on the east side of 1919, and this is not correct, this should be further west, and open up some potential low-density residential development back here. So if the property owner wanted to currently, or wanted to do that, the next step in this process would be to rezone the property. If this property were to be requested to be rezoned, a very similar process would happen. We would have another public hearing, and all neighbors in the area would be given notification of that request to rezone this property, and all the neighbors would also have, within 200 feet, would have an opportunity to comment on that application.
It appears that, it appears to me that right now, the land is of little use to anyone. Is that, would that be fair to say, except I suppose somebody has to take care of it?
That would probably be a better question to be answered by the applicants.
I'm Lynn Snyder. I actually owned and managed that property for my family for many years. We were always under the impression that it was buildable. We did also give plans to the city of Correville to put fourplexes up there at one time, back whenever, never, and I was on the 2014 Land Use Plan Committee, I did not know that it had been changed to open space. We've had it listed for sale. There's no way we thought that that was open space. So historically, we always thought it was buildable. The city of Correville, when Jim Kessler was here, led us to believe that, yes, we could build on it. We were like maybe four, you know, two fourplexes or something up there. So it's always been considered buildable. My sister inherited the land, and she owns it now, and then now we know it's, you know. To me, it was a mistake, and it's a mistake that needs to be corrected. Got any questions? Sorry.
Can you point out that, so the gas line easement falls between the red line and the blue line?
That's, that's.
This is off. It's all right.
That, the.
Let me see if I can find, do you want me to look up the MMS exhibit?
The easement does not have.
I think that's just going to bring up a whole lot of issues when you start showing them that.
I think it's.
Unless you want to start discussing the reason.
There is enough land up there to build on. The easement is only part of it.
Yeah, like you said, it was all.
And you can get across it.
I walked across that property yesterday, or today, or yesterday afternoon. When you walk on, I believe it would be 2000, what's the lot on the left, the lot on the left?
2001.
2001. When you walk up there and cross basically where the back of that property could be, you see a gas marker to the right, to the right. So when you're walking up, and I'm not walking on the neighbor's property, and I don't know where the neighbor's property is, where those trees are there, but when you're walking up in the middle of that next lot, the gas marker is to the right. It's like right in the middle of the property.
Okay, both of those lots have open envelopes on them.
Can we come to the speaker, so we make sure we get everything?
I think the, the takeaway from a lot of this is, there is a, there is a large Mid-American gas pipeline utility easement. It's one and a half acres. That takes up a good portion of this lot. However, and these are not exact, the blue line should be moved left a little bit that I drew there, but there is an opportunity for a drive off of, off the east side of 1919 13th Street, where it could potentially access development in the rear back here, outside of the pipeline and easement area.
Okay.
That's, that's the takeaway. So there is the potential, but at this point, without knowing exact plans, exact layouts, soil, stormwater management, all the variables we look at when reviewing a development, I'm just not in a position to say something is absolutely developable or not. But I would say that it has been demonstrated, there is a potential.
Okay. All right. Is there anything further before I close the public hearing?
And I will tell you, the two lots in the front, the two lots on 13th Street, if you notice, they're much larger than the other lots. They were designed that way so that there was an easement between them. We always had an easement between them to go to the back lot, to the three acres in the back. There has been now some issues, we always had, we thought we had an agreement with, at that time, Iowa Illinois, to be able to go across there. You can, you can put a parking lot on a gas pipeline, you just can't build on it. So you could put a parking lot on the west side and build on the east side, and we had that easement, and now with, my sisters have now had some problems with Mid-American, they're not agreeing that that is, but there is an easement in between in the middle of those two lots.
How, if that shows, yes, can you put this up there? Does this show where the building envelopes are for those two lots? The easement goes up through there, and the easement goes up through here and through here, and directly up to I-28.
No, but would you mind if I, if we just pass this around, and then people in the audience could also view this document? This would, this would probably best illustrate that.
Okay, well, that one doesn't show this. Okay, there's building envelopes on both of those lots.
The dash line, the dash line is the pipeline easement, and then these are the two lots.
So we would have to sort that out at a potential site plan review?
Oh, correct, yes. All of, all of these things, if, if, if a developer or a home builder wished to build a single-family home or a townhome, there would be a complete site plan and review process. And prior to that, like I mentioned earlier, there would also be, unless it were single-family detached, there would also be a rezoning. detached, there would also be a rezoning request, in which case neighbors would be made aware of that. So, I can pull up the zoning, I don't, on this, and you can take a look at that.
Can you zoom out a little bit, too? I'd like to see the surrounding area. So, does that gas line easement run through Corvile?
Goes right west of this building. Goes through Morrison Park.
Okay.
Goes through Northridge Park.
So, the property to the, the property is currently zoned R2. You could do duplexes on R2. Other than that, we would anticipate a rezoning application. And the property to the south is zoned R4, which is a multifamily residential district, which is odd, but that R4 zoning has been in place for a long time.
And then what is the public easement to the north between the interstate right away and...
This is actually a green belt. The city owns this.
So, how far does that tie all the way back, then? The public green belt?
All the way to...
Corridge.
East side of Corridge Mall in this trail system right here. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments before I close the public hearing?
Do we have an opportunity to look at this?
Certainly.
Or a parking lot, yes, but a road, no, or...
Okay, as I said, that's a discussion between me and Mid American. I have several discussions with them. You can drive.
There is access.
There's access to it. You can drive across it. I requested a couple of years ago, talked to Dan about a road going up there, and because of what Corvile wants for infrastructure, for a road, Mid American will want a mile that. So, you can put a gravel driveway up there or something, that would be okay.
And again, I would just note, you know, what the, what the commission is considering tonight is, is low-density residential going to have a negative impact on the character of the area. How this is developed, if this can be developed, are all questions that would be addressed by designers, city staff, and also Mid American Energy down the road.
Apparently, like you said, this was, basically is open space now, and that was designated in 2014. I don't think that was a mistake back in 2014. When you look at the natural gas pipelines located on that property, according to that map, I don't think that was a mistake. I think that was intended because of the purposes of those natural gas pipelines, splitting that property up into something that would be extremely difficult to build on, and probably dangerous. We were kind of surrounded by natural gas pipelines on 13th Street, and I'd hate to see a big accident because of carelessness, building too close to natural gas pipelines. Our backyard, which I don't know if it's treated as a green space, I think there's been some real problems with, there's a water diversion in the back there, a retinage pond behind 13th Street to the south. Somehow, in the past, we've been, when it wasn't maintained, we as landowners were told we had to maintain it. It's not our property. And that's where that natural gas pipeline actually ends up, crossing 13th Street and running behind us there. There's, I guess there's some real issues on natural gas pipelines. They're not marked very well in many cases, and they're not marked very well on this property, but there is a marker up there in the middle of that property, and I see it splits that property in half. Anyway, I think this should be tabled till we have more, more information. I think the decision was right in 2014 to consider this as a open space. I don't think that was a mistake. And I think to change it now would be a big mistake, without at least more investigation as to the location of the natural gas pipelines on that property. Thanks.
Okay. The natural gas pipelines have been very much determined, it's been surveyed, they know where they're at. I've talked to Mid American, there's three of them in there. One of them has been abandoned. Two of them, they're huge, massive distribution lines, they go all the way through Corvile, they go all the way north across, under the interstate, and there is at least two acres up there that is buildable. We can't build on top of those easements, and all of those houses are built next to that easement up there. So, if you make, if you leave it as open space, you have taken away my rights as a property owner to do anything with that property, because I can't, I cannot maintain it and pay the taxes on it for an open space for who? The public? Am I supposed to let the public run wild on there? That doesn't even make sense. So, like I said, all those houses are built up there next to that easement, and there's houses all through Corvile that are built next to those easements, and we can't build on that easement.
Can we go back to the map that shows the street? Could you lift it up a little bit here? So, I can see this out here. Anyway, that, that natural gas pipeline ends up coming down here, across the 13th Street, going behind these properties here. If you'll notice, nobody has built on those properties where the natural gas pipeline is, and I don't know if they could. I don't know if it's so that they could, but of course, nobody has, because the pipeline is on top of those properties. And of course, this, this area wasn't, of course, built on it. I don't know why, but that's where the natural gas pipeline is located. And I, I think that's a good location for it, because it's at least a certain distance away from homes. There's a reason these properties haven't been built on, and that's because of the natural gas pipelines.
Okay. Seeing no one else stepping forward, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval to amend the Corvile Community Planned Land Use Map from open space to low-density residential?
So moved.
So moved by Arons?
Second.
Seconded by Wenman.
I was on the 2014 commission as well, and this piece of property, I do not, I went back to my notes, and we did not, it never came up ever once, which is kind of interesting, because we focused more down to the right, kind of behind McDonald's, down in that area, and then down off of, when this came through, I was like, wow, it did change. So, I, I don't know why, I, I'm, same with Lynn Snyder, I don't know how that changed. I don't remember seeing it. And I also agree with the person talking, if you're going to change it to open space, somebody's going to have to buy it from me, right? You just took my property.
Well, and, you know, clearly, there's questions that still need to be answered.
Absolutely.
But that's not the purpose of what we're voting on tonight.
Yeah. Could you, could you read, David, the statement that you talked about earlier, the change of character of the area? You read a really good statement.
Sure. Really, with the, when making the decision on whether or not to approve a change in the land use map amendment, what you should be considering is, will that change have a negative impact on the character or efficiencies, or, you know, even traffic, things like that, in the general vicinity? And as I noted with this particular application, everything surrounding this is also low-density residential. So, in terms of densities, low-density residential, again, allows for zero to six dwelling units per acre, subdivisions to the west, as well as subdivisions to the south. They're all actually five dwelling units per acre or less, and in that low-density category.
So, I'm going to share my comments. I do think this was probably an error. I love open space. I really want to keep this as open space, but I don't think that's where we're at at this time. I think the best solution for this is to move this to low-density residential, and then have them bring a plat back. And I'll be honest, I would like to see some of that as an outlot with green space in it, but I also don't want to take your rights away as a landowner to profit from the pieces that has potential for development. You have two lots there, there's potentially another room in the back for that, and I think that's your opportunity to work with your designer to say, hey, we have a gas line easement through here, they're going to have some stipulations you have to put in, and then it might not be a bad idea to have some, leave an outlot in there for stormwater runoff from these developments, things like that. And so, that's where I'm going to give, that's where I'm going to sit tonight, is to move this forward, and then be prepared to discuss, discuss it further when they come back.
I have to agree with that. I question the use of open space here. Those, a lot of those homes have been there for a long time. I think it's a matter of whether you can get, if you get the R2 rezoning, if you can really get the kind of development that's going to make it feasible, you know, economically feasible to build something in there with that pipeline. So, I'm, I'm okay with changing the zoning.
Those existing homes are not on the pipeline.
Pardon me?
Those existing homes are not on the pipeline.
Sir, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed.
That's information.
Is there any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval to amend the Corvile Community Planned Land Use Map from open space to low-density resident, residential. Roll call vote.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Casserly?
Aye.
Arons?
Aye.
Wenman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Motion carried, seven to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Friedhoff?
Seconded.
Seconded by Arons. This meeting is now adjourned.